Can you hear me? This is Mia. Good morning, Charlene and John. Can you hear me? This is Mia.
I can hear you Mia. Just took me a bit to find the button.
Okay, great. Just wanted to make sure. Good morning Kevin, how are you?
Good morning, I'm doing good.
Good. Or good afternoon rather. Are you able to hear me?
Yes, I can hear you Mia.
Mia. Great. Just so everyone is aware, we are live streaming right now.
Good morning everyone, this is Mia. Good afternoon everyone, we'll be starting in just a little bit.
President Crawford, it's Elliot.
Yes sir.
Just looking who's on, who's online. You do have a quorum.
Okay, very good. Good afternoon everybody, just another minute. Thank you very much for making yourselves available.
President Crawford, all members are present.
I think we're just waiting for the Superintendent.
I can't hear anybody. This is Rachel, but I can't hear anybody. Somebody talk so I can test that please.
Yes, this is, can you hear me Rachel? Alright. And I think... Let's see if it works out. Mr. Barkley, are you able to hear? I saw in the chat that you had an initial problem. Well, what I'd like to do at this time is call the meeting to order. Uh, Dr. Simpson, if you would take the role please?
I can't seem to hear anything.
I think he, Mr. Barkley's having problems with his... Audio, I don't, not sure, he's there.
Uh, Ms. Bates, I don't, I don't see Mr. Barkley.
Yes, Mr. Barkley's there.
Okay, I'll just leave it out here immediately. I, I, I can hear you on that.
Can you get it out, Mr. Barkley? Great.
Alright, Ms. Bates? Ms. Bates? Ms. Chang? Mr. DeShiel?
Present.
Dr. Getty? Dr. Getty?
She's here.
Dr. Green? Ms. Halley?
Present.
Ms. McCusker?
Present.
Thank you. Dr. Miller-McPartey?
Present.
Ms. Mara?
Present.
General Sontum? I see that he's... Dr. Wilcox?
Present.
And Mr....
Present.
Mr....
Present. Present.
President Crawford?
Present.
And Superintendent Shodri?
I am here.
The role, the role call is complete.
Mr. Shaw?
You have a quorum. Senator Bates is now present.
Okay. I spoke with her this morning, I know she has, that she'll be joining us. But at this time, what I'd like to do is to just mention that today's special meeting will be conducted virtually through WebEx. And the public can access the meeting via our livestream on the State Board MSBE website. The meeting agenda is posted there on the website and archived video will be there as well. Uh, before we move, go first, I just want to just thank everyone that participated in our number sixteen special meeting and for those who provided comments. We greatly appreciate your involvement. I want to just quickly review what we're going to do today. Uh, we're going to next adjourn to executive session to seek legal advice on a regulatory matter. Then we will reconvene and we'll just remind everybody of what, you know, what our, of our resolution and our commitment, which was to return to safe in-person instruction for our children's staff with minimal disruptions for this school year. Then we're going to get a brief update on transmission rates from the Superintendent. And then following Robert's rules, we're going to give the board members an opportunity to share any comments or thoughts or observations. And then we will open the floor for a motion. At this time, I'm going to read the statement that will allow us to go into executive session. Pursuant to section three, actually, B seven of the general provisions article of the Annotated Court of Maryland, the State Board will adjourn to executive session to discuss the following: Legal advice regarding a regulatory matter. And we will return at approximately one thirty-five. It's now open for a motion that would allow us to adjourn to executive session.
Right, Ms. McCusker?
And then seconded by Ms. McCusker. Questions? Seeing no questions, we'll just take a voice and hand vote. All in favor of adjourning to executive session, please say aye and raise your hands.
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, what you doing?
Uh, actions, abstentions? Seeing none, we're going to now adjourn to executive session.
President Crawford, who made the motion? I didn't catch.
Dr. Millie McPartey and then seconded by Ms. McCusker.
...
By comments, the parents, the students, the student advocates, the teacher representatives, and the local board members that were there, and the written comments from Azam, the superintendent, and our expert panel. And we want to thank all of the individuals that took the time to send us comments. And we listened to everything you said. We welcome your comments, your suggestions. We even welcome your criticism, because we learn a lot from that. And we listen, and we try to be people of them. At this time, I'd like to ask the superintendent, Superintendent Choudhary, to just to give us a quick update on the transmission rates, and then to give us a perspective from an MSD perspective, education perspective, on your thoughts about an appropriate way forward. And again, just reminding everyone, in the spring, we as a board unanimously approved a resolution that called for the safe return of in-person instruction for our children and our staff. And we wanted to do it in a way with minimal disruptions. And we felt that for the vast majority of our children, in-person learning was superior to virtual. So Superintendent Choudhary.
Thank you, President Crawford. I have Mary Gable, Assistant Superintendent Mary Gable, with me, social duty level, giving a short presentation of what the current state of transmission and other data points look like across our counties, including our city of Baltimore. So, Mary?
Thank you. I am working to share my...
We can see it?
Point. You can see it. I'm going to try to get it so that it's a bigger picture for you. So, thank you. This is just Mr. Crawford, Mr. Dashill, members of the state board, and Mr. Choudhary. This is a quick review of the data that we have, that I've been providing you for the last several board meetings. So, we're just going to concentrate on positivity rates, seven-day moving average, and so on. You can see those before you. So, first off, this is the daily positivity rate. This is information from the Maryland Department of Health website that we track for you. And just as a note, you can see, we've had a couple of additional meetings, but we do try and track it every week for you. And then on next Tuesday, we'll give you, we'll update it again and provide it for you. Just in summary, as you look, and I was just looking from November 25th to November 30th, there's a slight uptick. There is a statewide uptick from 4.1% to 5.1 on a daily positivity rate. And 21 of our local school systems have gone up some just slightly. One has remained the same, and two of them have gone down as you look across. And obviously, we will be posting this if it's not posted already, so that the public can see it more clearly. But all of the data is there for you. The next slide is what we give you every time, so you can just see the visuals. So, I realize that you can't read the numbers well, but the numbers are on the previous slide. It gives you the ups and downs of the school systems, and school systems that are a little higher or lower than others, and you have looked at this before. This is the same type of slide. The next slide is another piece of information from MDH that we provide for you, and this is the seven-day moving average case rate per 100,000. In this case, the results are just a little bit different of, in this case, 12 of the local school systems have gone down. And then you can see 12 have gone up. So, a few more about this, a little different, slightly different data. Statewide is slightly up from 15.6 to 16.0 from November 25th to November 30th. The next slide we have for you is, again, the same open field, and you can take a look at the ebbs and flows and ups and downs of each of the school systems, along with the state, which is on the far left. The next slide is the level, excuse me, the level of community transmissions over the past seven days by jurisdictions. In this case, you will see that we have 11 that are substantial. And the last time, we had eight systems that were split. And then this is not school systems, this is jurisdiction. So, these are the whole counties or the whole city. You can see a slight bit. We have no, we do not have any of the, in the moderate area. And you can see, we have a few more that are substantial. And we'll show you the changes in the next slide, where you can see a little bit more. So, we go from, in the beginning, the first number that you're seeing in each of the columns is high, second is substantial, and the third is moderate. We have no moderate at this time. And you can see where we were from as of November 22nd to November 30th. As we hope that the high decreases, substantial increasing, of course, is moving in the correct direction. The next piece of data that we have been sharing with you, and these are statewide hospitalizations. I'm going to have to see, there we go. I have to move, looking at some of you. I couldn't see that. Hopefully, that's not impacting you. The adult, this adult acute beds, and you can see the number, we started for 12 on October 31st, as of November 21st, it was 434. And as of November 30th, so we collect all this data yesterday for you. We just pulled this this morning, 529. And then acute beds that are 140 to 162 from November 21st to November 30th. The pediatric beds are very, very small, so you see small numbers. And then we have given you the total number of beds. I think that is it in terms of the data, but it just gives you an update. And the next slide, in terms of beds, just gives you, you can take a look. This is visually gives you the breadth as to what things are holding their own, or what things that are going up slightly. So, hopefully, this data from the previous data on substantial and high, that is CDC data. This data and the first set of slides are MDH data that I provide for you, and we'll continue to provide. Thank you. And you're very welcome.
So Superintendent Choudhary, can you just, from your vantage point, what is, from an MSD, an education vantage point, what are your takeaways? What are you thinking?
So, you know, we are looking and monitoring this issue regularly. It's something, frankly, something that I read about often, and my team look at. And I often say, you know, this is not work that we're just doing by ourselves. We are part of a nation. And so, I'm able to reach out to colleagues at various states as well, and see what they are doing. At the end of the day, you know, it's very important for the board most is keeping our schools open, and making sure that they stay open. And I have said many times, no single school should have to close down as a result of COVID, again, hopefully. And so, so far, with the exception of one school, we, that was temporarily closed, we have been strong going into, you know, our winter months and our second semester. So, the other thing, as you heard from our local superintendents as well, as they look through their letter, is just making sure we can minimize quarantines, and how many students we have to quarantine on a daily basis, because quarantine learning is not fun. It's not, it's a disruption. And so, you know, we know that the mask has played a role in helping to minimize that, and also make sure that, you know, we're not quarantining more kids than we have to. We recently published guidance with our partners at MDH to modify quarantine with this, leading to, you know, not having to quarantine as much as kids even then before that, as long as, you know, the mask is involved. We have great data now nationally on the power of the vaccine. And now we have vaccines available for kids who are at the younger age spectrum. And, you know, there's another round also on the horizon for our youngest kids. And so, having that is, basically tells us that it is time to think about off-ramps. And so, we've heard from various perspectives. Not everyone agrees, but everyone does agree in the aggregate research that the vaccine is the most powerful tool in fighting the virus and keeping it, you know, keeping our communities safe. And so, we believe that an off-ramp, if was developed, and should include our vaccination rates in our communities in some way. I think that's very important, and what that looks like. What that looks like specifically, we still need to think through. But, you know, fortunately, we're not the only ones thinking about this. You know, and there's different elements you can look at. You could look at vaccination rates, you could look at case rates, you could look at possible vaccination rates. You know, we heard from experts who said, you know, there should be a time that masks come off, or if not sooner. But what is also important to hear in what they said, right, we heard from Dr. McBride, is also that, you know, testing would also be a very irregular part of daily life right now, right? You would have rapid tests, right? And unfortunately, we're not at a place yet in the country where rapid tests are available. The governor did recently make, I think, about 500,000 available for various communities. But, you know, it's still something that costs a lot, and, you know, we don't have rapid test for everyone. But it was something we should be able to do, right? But in the absence of that, right, we do have the vaccine, and we do have other things as well that we can look at. And so, I would basically say is where our current thinking is, is we can't mask our children forever, right? However, we do know masking does play a role in helping to keep our communities safe, along with the vaccine, along with everything else related to ventilation and other mitigation strategies. So, I believe that, you know, we can update our rates in a way that allows for an on-ramp, an off-ramp for our communities, based on where they're at. And as the vaccination rates continue to tick up across all of our eligible population. And I think that's, that's something that we should look at. And that's, that's what I would share from MSD's perspective at this time. Again, very important, all of this, it is no single school should have to close down because of COVID. No, no quarantine should be still minimized. Those things I do not want to compromise on, right? Like, in terms of how we go about doing this. And I would respectfully ask the board to remember those two elements of all of this, right? Because we're never going to get back to normal if we don't keep our schools open. Just a reminder, we were, we were third from last from reopening as in the nation, and we should not be getting back to that, or creating avenues for that, and school disruptions itself. So, I would just add that element as I end my statements.
What I would like to do at this point would be now to just open the floor to the board members. We will follow Robert's rules, and we shall know the board members will have a couple of opportunities to speak. But obviously, if there is a burning issue or whatever, or a new topic, we will entertain that. First, I see Ms. McCusker, and then Mr. Popon.
Thank you, Superintendent Choudhary. You said that you've been looking into what other states have been using as their off-ramps. Can you share some of that information, please?
Sure. There's a couple of things. Like, for example, Nevada, as a state, is using the CDC transmission metric. So, any community or region or county, once they reach lower than substantial, then they can lift off the mask mandate, or the face covering requirement. But if they go back to substantial or above, then they have to put it back on. So, that's one version of an off-ramp, right? So, it's based on data, a specific metric, and it can fluctuate up and down based on where the community is with cases inside. So, that's one example. Another one that I, that has, experts have been looking at closely is in Massachusetts. Massachusetts has decided to tie it to vaccine rates of individual schools, and what that looks like. And so, they looked at 80% as a number, which is, which is, which experts have agreed is a pretty strong number in terms of having your community, the community around you. in terms of having your community, the 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 community around you, you can got with every day vaccinated. And so they essentially said when a school reaches an eighty percent threshold with their staff and students, they can choose to come off of the face covering requirement if they choose, right? They also had another element in it, though, that often doesn't get talked about is they also said anything who's not vaccinated has to keep the masks on. And so they didn't come up with a metric for that for those individuals. So so there's that piece. Right now, there are about, there's a few schools, there are more than ten who have come off of it. And so, you know, everyone in the nation is watching what how bad is going with those schools in Massachusetts. So those are two examples in terms of off ramp. And then other people are looking at combinations of things, right? Vaccine plus plus case rates and other things as well. But like I said, the one example I gave you was vaccine. The one for Nevada was on the transmission rate, but obviously transmission should go down as more folks get vaccinated, but also are responsible in their day to day lives. Because, you know, COVID's not going to go away. It's how do we get to making it endemic, right? And so those are some of its benefits.
So can I follow up?
Yes, please.
With Nevada's transmission rate, is there a time period that they have to be sitting at a substantial? Because I know when I follow transmission rates in the state of Maryland, you can have a county that's on it one week and high, and the next week they're substantial, and then they're back up to high, and so it bounces around a lot? Do they put something in place to to try to see a trend before they change it, or are they just letting it bounce?
So they literally have something like at twelve oh one A M, when it drops the next day, you 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 can come out that day without it. So that's that's how they have it about. And, you know, also locally, we have an example. Montgomery County had put in a metric to lift the county base requirement. We're not talking about schools. And they have, I think they had like a sustained low case rate for seven days. They lifted it, but then it went back up and they put it back on and it wasn't it wasn't that many days. So so that approach, although database and and but it is, it can be frustrating, right? Especially if you're a highly vaccinated community and you're like, well, okay, well, what what does this mean now? We just have to go up and down each time and put this face, the mask back on. So that that's what they had. So those are two examples. I gave you the Montgomery County with the sustained case rate. And then Nevada was like, the day goes down basically because the CDC metric would drop the community. But I don't think it happened just quickly, right? It would take a lot of the cases to go down to reach below substantial.
The floor is open for board members. We've heard parents, teachers, other education officials, experts. We've received a lot of comments and, right? It's an opportunity for the board to share their thoughts about what they heard and thinking about a way forward. I just want to just ask one clarifying question of the superintendent. So if I'm hearing you correctly, then the position of M S D E is not to allow the the face covering requirement to expire, if you would have something else in place. Is that correct?
The position of M S D E would be that we tie the face covering requirement coming off to an off ramp. It doesn't just, you you just, I would recommend you not just vote to just turn off the the current requirement that is in place. We should have tie it to smart research database metrics that allow people to reach that off ramp and then come off of it if they so choose.
Very good. So floor is open. Ms. Halli. And this, Mr. Pupun.
It's just another clarifying question. So we see variants and we see that the drug manufacturers are creating vaccines to address the variants that aren't yet available. They anticipate them being available in the future. When you look at vaccination rates, what do you anticipate in terms of this evolution of the vaccines?
You're asking me a question that's out of my wheelhouse. I feel like, you know, I I, you know, I look at Dr. Shaw at Brown. I look at Dr. Wen here in Baltimore. I see what they're saying and no one's saying, don't stop getting vaccinated. Keep getting vaccinated, get boosted. You know, I just got boosted on Friday. And so, you know, that they're saying that is still the most powerful weapon we have in ensuring the health and safety of our community. But we're not gonna know for another month from what I've seen. And I would ask Dr. Will Cox already and Nelson, who works in this field regularly, to whether or not the 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 impact of the new variant, right, that we're seeing right now coming about. But every national expert who I've seen, you know, you know, that's well regarded and a leader in this has said, don't stop getting vaccinated, keep getting vaccinated, get boosted. And, you know, we continue to use all the mitigation strategies. But I I can't say if the current vaccine is gonna hold up against the other one. But everything I have seen is saying like, it may, as long, but you don't know if you don't get vaccinated, right? Because the delta is what's still live right now, right? And so let's not forget that. And so we still need to combat the delta very hand. And then we'll we'll look at what the the new variant could do or may not do.
I ask it only from the point of view of, I'm hoping, I think you made a comment earlier that the fact that COVID is gonna be a part of our experience for a long time. So I'm hoping that as we think about what the regulation should be, that we create policies that mean that it evolves with the community and allows for community input. Because I do think there's a huge education agenda. And kids being in school is a big part of being successful in that education agenda. But there are other elements to the agenda that I want to make sure we have time to discuss and thoroughly address. So my hope is that at the end of this, we create a policy that gives comfort to the community about the ways the policy will be enacted in their local communities. That has enough differentiations for the communities that have different experiences, have those off ramps. And that it is, if we give them the guardrails to be able to operate, but that local communities have processes for community input. And that the program is one that can continue to stand as we navigate through a long journey with this virus.
And I, Mr. Pupun.
Ms. Halli, excellent points. I want to ask a clarifying question of Ms. Choudhary. In your research into COVID in schools, what have you seen specifically with dealing with in the southeastern Atlantic? A lot of those jurisdictions have not opened with masks. So how have them been doing? And following with that question, what do you envision without mask quarantine procedures looking like?
So that's a question that could be answered in different ways, right? So what, you are seeing rising case rates. So you would need to go dig into and look at disruptions in learning, right? Quarantining more than they need to, you need to look at what the health indicators look like in those regions. So in terms of, I'll give you an example. You know, in Texas, they decided not to do a statewide requirement and they opened the school year without it. And many schools closed abruptly in the fall. And 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 charter in our district schools, they closed abruptly and then they got the mandate. They decided to go schoolwide mask masking to 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 reopen safely and responsibly and also minimize quarantine. So not everyone's choosing to do that, but you, a good chunk of the state has chosen to do that because you have to close school for the people order over a few days in a very disruptive manner. It's a place that I know pretty well, you know, and so that's an example. We're seeing the same thing in other places as well, you know, whether it be in Tennessee or other states. Now, some states have made it harder to even allow for local control on masking. So it's the other way around in some places. And so, and it required school systems to even defy that. And so I would say what I'm seeing is more disruptions and quarantining, right? But on the on the part where you you say, well, what if school systems chose not to quarantine, quarantine and they chose not to also go to school? Well, I'm just gonna go ahead and say that's just an irresponsible period because that's even need to say just, you know, COVID does have no effects at all when it comes to the health and safety of our children and and the adults. And yeah, it can have a lot more effect on children. But frankly, one child getting sick and potentially leading to a death is should be more than enough to to make sure we are being responsible and safe and safe. So for those that have those regions that have chosen to not even do anything about it, I would say that is completely irresponsible and putting people's health at risk. We should not be playing games with COVID in that way.
Thank you, Ms. Choudhary. But just going on to the other point I mentioned. It was the off ramps that, the supposed off ramps with the masking. How do you envision those communities which achieve this off ramp? How do you envision them tackling quarantine processes? I know there's not a plan out there right now, but just just speaking, how do you envision it?
But still, the guidance is out there. We've created a modified guidance that gives them multiple pathways, right? At this time, a child is not asked, if anyone's wearing a mask, then they don't have to quarantine. And we've given different options around that. As long as that is happening, we have told the school system they can do that. Now, they can add other elements to that if they wanna do, you know, a tested stay approach. Like if they wanna do, you know, a screening testing approach, in addition to that, they can do all of that. We didn't give them one pathway, but the one element that was true across the updated guidance that we sent from M D H is if everyone's properly masked, then you can choose to not quarantine. But then we said, you know, there are risk levels involved with choosing one version versus the other, right? But the one thing that we opened up is remember originally if you're masking within five feet, then you you can remain. Now we've said basically, the option of how many feet you're away, that that that's been taken away. So some school systems could then choose to not quarantine each of our children without using a mask. And so that element will still be in play. But again, once the, once we think about an off ramp and what that comes about, then I would want the, hopefully, I would want to craft a a regulation and approach with the board that still enables the children to remain at the school. I would not want them to quarantine. I would not want to say just create an off ramp, but you can't quarantine kids if we're not masked. That's that's not, that's not helpful either. So that makes sense?
Dr. Will Cox?
Yes, in terms of the off ramps, I do think that the the percent vaccination within counties or within specific schools is a seems reasonable, like it'd be eighty percent vaccination rate. It may be hard to achieve in some areas. So I think it might also be worthwhile to consider community transmission rates. And also thinking about, you know, the COVID virus is rapidly evolving and there are breakthrough cases. And so I think we also so also should consider the COVID positive case rate within communities and level of community transmission. But I also think that it's really important to to follow the recommendations of the experts, of the CDC, Dr. Chan, of the Health, Maryland Health Department and our local county health departments as well.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Mr. Barkley, then Ms. Mall?
Thanks for the opportunity to just, to stump it. Mary Gable gave the statistics with regards to averages and the positivity rates and the trends. You know, I was looking for data that compares general population against the school and whether or not the the general population is different than the infection rates in the school. And if the infection rates in the school are lower than that of the general population, that's something that needs to be considered. Because using the general population as it relates to the school, I think is an unfair assessment. During the presentations of the experts at our November sixteenth meeting, took a great deal of notes, as a matter of fact, and had a chance to reflect on them before today's meeting. Dr. McBride pointed out that the infection rate and the death rate amongst adolescent children is very low, if not negligible. And so comparing the school infection rate against the general population rate is needed because we know that children, although they may contract the virus, there's a slight chance of any that they would die from the virus. Dr. McBride also pointed out that the infection transmission rate from the children to an adult is very rare and not as significant as an adult to an adult. On a positive note, I think that the current regulation, temporary regulation that we put in place may have had some benefit. And considering that the current emergency regulation in place may have been effective and its expiration is not until February, I would be against instituting any permanent regulation at this time. And in the event that the transmission rate does not spike during these winter months, that the need for a permanent regulation would not be in the best interest of the public, but rather going through the process with regards to to proposed temporary regulation. And the hearing is in the best interest of the general public and local control. I think it was effectively used and I think the public hearing was effectively used and gave an opportunity for us to be transparent and use a process that has been in place to ensure that not too much power is vested in the state school board as opposed to having local control. But I think the having an emergency regulation with regards to masking, it seems to be effective. There's no death amongst children in our schools. There may be some children that are sick. That's another statistic I didn't see as to whether or not there have been any children that have been hospitalized in acute bed and whether or not the children being hospitalized in acute beds in hospitals are depriving the opportunity for the most affected of our population, which are adults. So, you know, I'm for using what we have now that is currently in place and I'm not for a permanent regulation at this time. Thanks.
Thank you. Any additional comments? Ms. Mall, yes, please.
Good afternoon. So I guess I'll just start out with it first. I I think I support creating a different regulation that will will be more transparent on off ramps. I think we're at a position now with vaccines at the age five, that that we have the option a lot more. I guess one one kind of logistical question that I have from the superintendent. So if we create something that is tied to a vaccination rate of staff and students, what what system will that take? I mean, I'm picturing like Bowie High School with twenty four hundred students. Does that mean our school nurses are gonna have twenty four hundred pieces of paper to to keep track of everybody's vaccination cards? Or is that something that we will be able to incorporate into kind of the existing systems that they use to track immunizations?
I mean, it can look in different ways, but the goal is to create an off ramp. So I, you know, you have to create a process to manage the off ramp. So just to say you just can create a new existing system right now. You know, we don't have like a universal system that tracks all routine vaccinations plus the COVID back. That that doesn't exist yet. I mean, that's still even the new frontier thing. But in terms of the But in terms of being able to look at and, and confirm that someone is vaccinated, yes, you would, you know, in the same way, uh, school systems right now have for athletes or for their staff, right? You read your test, are you sure that you're vaccinated, right? And they use a process to confirm that, right? And so it would be something similar to that, um, and hopefully they do it in a way that is, you know, I, I can't say there isn't some burden involved in being able to check if people are vaccinated. That there's no way to not avoid that, but, but something that police is not as too cumbersome to be able to check it or look at it, right? If I may think about when you go to an event that requires you to show evidence of your vaccine, what do they ask you to show, right? Um, it could be something as on your phone, right? And so, um, so we, we could think through that, but that's how, but yes, it would require confirming, uh, vaccination rates at a local level, right? And MDA, MDAH right now tracks the county level, so we have that number, that, that, that's looked at, um, what our counties look like, yeah.
So is that, that's something then the MSC would be able to hopefully support the districts as well as figuring out kind of what that process is looking at if they need assistance, yes?
Yes, but I don't, I guess what that means, uh, I, I would have to, like, so, yeah, I mean, if you're talking about me deploying my staff down on the ground to look at cards, I, no. I, I think it's not completely unrealistic to ask people to check if people are vaccinated or not. Where do you, like, routine vaccinations, oh, that's all we have to do on these school reports for a subset of kids? And so it's not something, um, you know, that, that is, uh, if, if we are looking for an off ramp, we have to create a process to manage that, right?
The, the advantage of a, uh, off ramp based on school would especially be attractive in counties where vaccination rates are low and probably never get to eighty percent. But if there's a school or schools within that county that achieve that, they would be able to, uh, use that as an off ramp. I just wanna just say something about local control. Um, as in, I spent the last thirty years of my life as a senior executive and third public member, but the world's largest professional service, um, just like here at Metro and, uh, have a nonprofit and I teach in the, uh, Masters of Public Administration program. With local control, I'm one, what I've always preferred is tell me what you want me to do and go away. So I don't like to be micromanaged. But what I have seen over the years is when you as a leader have been given a lot of flexibility, you have flexibility like this, but you also have accountability. And I would argue with local control, I'm, I have no problem with local control. But I would just again argue that there needs to be a net of local control and accountability and, uh, responsibility. In one particular instance, it's my understanding that the, uh, one particular school system incoming to its decision not to mask rejected the recommendations of the local health, uh, department on two occasions, because I've given, uh, recommendations from health department to have the mask. In doing so, they rejected the guidance from CDC and they rejected ours. What I just say is that as a board, as we look at this, is I'm, again, I'm, I'm, I'm very comfortable with local control. But local control comes with a level of responsibility with it. It's not one up here and responsibility is low here. And I think as we look at these situations, we have to just, we're in this not because we went out and tried to spur out, let's see what we could find and get involved. That's not how we came to this. We came to this based on the commitment that we made in the spring that said return children and staff to save in person rather than with minimum disruption. That's where, that's why we're here, that's how we got involved in this and this is what we're doing. So I think when we talk about local control, there's also an equally important component, which is accountability and responsibility for decisions. So I think as you listen to that, and I think each person has to sort of weigh that in their own minds as you, as you hear that I'm all in favor of local control. And in fact, quite honestly, I think if we polled that board right now and said, how many of you guys love face coverings? I would think probably there wouldn't be one hand here. Sometimes leadership is a terribly difficult thing, General knows that. Sometimes you have to, in fact, do what's necessary. Even if doing what is necessary runs counter to what you would like to do individually. Sometimes it just comes down to having to do that. I think that's sort of where we are right now in terms of as we look at this is, I don't think anybody wants face coverings. I don't think anybody, we clearly did not want to be involved in, in the regulation business related to this. Um, but sometimes in leadership, you have to do what is necessary, not what you would like to do. I just wanted to just get that out.
Dr. Greed and, um, Ms. Chai and then Ms. McCusker?
I think I am leaning toward, um, a regulation with off ramps, but that the off ramp to require vaccinations, um, be, um, uh, would yield to the, um, uh, the other rates that we talked about, the hospitalization rates, ICU rates. Um, I am not a supporter of wholesale vaccinations for children. Um, from what I have read and seen and heard, that people are getting, um, COVID and getting sick, um, despite the vaccinations, I know that they are saying, well, vaccinations minimizes the effects. But with children with an untested vaccination, um, that we don't know what are the long-term effects on these babies, we just don't. So, you know, if we do keep the three masks, uh, let's look at, um, hospitalizations. Let's look at, at, at the, at the other rates that we're, that we're considering as well, not just the vaccination rate.
Thank you. Who was next? It was, uh, Ms. Chang and then, uh, Ms. McCusker.
I, I definitely support the, um, the regulation with the, um, off ramp, um, kind of option. And with, um, hearing colleagues, uh, with many suggestions, even the emails coming in, uh, from publics, they even suggested some, um, ideas, which is good, you know? People are really thinking, really want to solve the problem as a whole, not just looking at their, um, their own niche. Yeah, but then, um, people are willing to expand their, their, uh, scope and look at the, the big picture. I, I'm thinking about the, uh, components in the regular rap with off ramp, uh, looking at transmission rate, of course, yeah, that is an indicator, uh, the fluctuation will be, you know, uh, kind of looking at, uh, very fluctuation like a from week to week as we see in the past, okay? Especially as we know that the virus is very highly, uh, mutated, you know, quickly. And here comes the, uh, Omicron and, uh, we still need time, or scientists still need time to kind of, uh, collect more data to be able to kind of, uh, better engage them. So that we're taking into consideration. Same thing as positive cases, yeah, they are kind of tied to the screening testing rate and the transmission rate. So in the right, uh, the, now that is not definitely a true, uh, kind of, uh, criteria. Uh, looking at the vaccination, yeah, there, uh, uh, people get vaccination, uh, one shot and second shot. And now they require, uh, people to get the booster and how frequently that, uh, booster shot or annual, uh, shot will be given. Are we looking at those factors? So that becomes a very complicated, uh, process. I just try to throw out those, uh, possible, uh, variables out there. And the other thing is accountability, of course, that, uh, we, as, uh, President, uh, Crawford mentioned, we respect, uh, local control and it has been that way that, you know, feel very comfortable to working with, uh, each, uh, local district. But the, um, accountability and practicality, how would, uh, each, uh, school in each district kind of monitor the, uh, their vaccination rate, their, uh, rate with, uh, transmission rate within the school? Some we can see from the data since, uh, August, you know, not a hundred percent that, um, up to bar that I would say for, for, uh, what I saw. So we could, you know, bump up those, uh, accountability so we can make it and write it into the reg if we want to make it, uh, permanent one with the off ramp. So with that being said, we have a lot of work to, uh, do and we need to consider many variables and based upon the, um, Esper panel we received information plus.
Thank you. Ms. McCusker and then Dr. Miller-McPhee.
Thank you, and, and I have kind of a question comment that's moving in a slightly different direction, something we haven't really talked about, but that has been brought to me. Um, when we look at the exceptions that we have written into the current emergency regulation, um, we have exceptions, it's to play sports, uh, we have exception for wind players to play wind instruments unmasked in performance, um, but there are some other fine arts performances like a musical on stage or a stage play, um, a choral performance, singing performance, not necessarily rehearsals, but performance, where being masked, um, inhibits the actor's ability to act. Um, and I, if, if we're looking at, at some of the exceptions that we had and then after we have, we find these unintended other things that seem like they would be in the same vein. I mean, if you can have a couple of kids on the basketball court in each other's faces, playing basketball or wrestling on a mat, but we're not allowing an actor to perform on a stage without a mask, not even necessarily up in someone else's faces, whether or not we are, our exceptions are, um, equitable to the different types of activities that children might do in a performance type of arena, whether it's physical performance or whether it's artistic performance and not necessarily practices, but the performing venue in front of the audience is something that I'd like us to, to think about and consider.
Thank you. Dr. Miller-McPhee.
Thank you, um, Ms. McCusker, that's a really good point. Thank you for bringing that up. I, I do wanna support, um, the public staff, her agreement and Ms. Hallie. Um, I, I do, I, 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 I do, I do wonder about the, some of the different types of vaccines in young ladies and young children. Um, and so I, I don't want us necessarily to be seen as going through a backdoor to mandate vaccines for children. Um, and so using other type of criteria, I think, could be considered. Um, and, um, I say this with great trepidation because I am not against vaccinations, but, but I do wonder if there's, you know, community or school rate or other things that you've mentioned, Mr. Chery, that we could include in this conversation and in this legislation. Um, I, I just think if it's truly local control, then we have to offer some other options. Um, but I do believe in, in, in the key is in the accountability. How true to following your own criteria by both the districts and the district buildings be to make sure that they're doing what they're saying to, to mitigate this.
One other thing I think we should also look at with, um, vaccinations, with increased immunities, other, uh, medications, various other kinds of things is I think we should look at, even with the longer term regulation, the possibility of sunsetting at a certain point in time. Obviously, you know, it's sunset in a year or two. Um, if things are still out of control, then the board at that time would revisit. Uh, I'm hoping that maybe within a, a year or another year or two, uh, we will have achieved enough immunity and, um, activation, uh, other medical options that may significantly reduce the, the need for a face cover. So I think something that had a, a sunset, I know we won't typically do that with regs, but I think this might be one of the areas where we would want to consider something like that at a point in time in the future.
Well, this is now we're, oh, Ms. Hallie and then General Sumpert.
Thank you. It's just another clarifying question. Will any consideration be given if someone has developed some natural immunity because they have already recovered from COVID?
I can speak to, to include this requirement for immunity and the things that I've seen on that notion of natural immunity. It is a very hot topic and I don't know if that is something I personally have seen some research that actually confirms, you can just argue natural immunity keeps you. So I have not seen anything that shows a strong case for that, but that's something that, you know, uh, I, I, I'll keep looking into. But I personally, when I see the conversation on natural immunity, there's a debate running from that concept.
So I think as we look at, at options going forward to the center, which we can rely upon, uh, I'm gonna say in quotes, proven, um, protested strategies would probably better off, uh, again.
General Sumpert?
I feel like a lot of good thoughts and comments and questions about measurements and forward to the plan, um. What gets to me though, is we're trying to do something on a state level when our, uh, George twenty-four LEAs are going on a head nation in the city. Data's so diverse, so different, and finding from other matrices at this level, making that more of all twenty-four and be, be, meet the community's needs is very difficult things for us to do and especially we do within the country. Uh, I believe in vaccinations have guided me my whole life through the military, you know, with the young adult with my hands. Uh, but I will tell you that some of the rural areas of the state are not going vaccinated. By community, uh, and, and we were one Somerset County, looking at the Lower Shore and Hoister and Mykoma Town. We were one of the, uh, high infection rate counties. Now we're one of the lower numbers, but yet we are one of the lowest number vaccinated areas in this. So the numbers and the, that, that's a different matrix that we're gonna look at. Don't even speak to each other and claim why those numbers are there. I really feel that these are decisions that are, look, our board is upon. Most of the twenty-four George stations are good or hybrid. And that gives the community a way to discuss and change things they don't look, not have the way they should. And there's another side effect that I, I really bothers me. I'm afraid that once if we're using a matrix on what is not an individual in that school, the family or the student the family or the student or the staff or the teachers or administrators aren't doing what people feel they should do, is there going to be pressure, peer pressure among children pulling? And we don't want to set up any things that would do that. I really feel in this one instance, that local jurisdictions, working with the local health department, parents, community as a whole, in some jurisdictions, they do it regionally, they look at the regionally and look at these numbers or others' banks. I really feel that in this case, we need to trust elected officials at the local level working with the community, the leadership committee, all the state board, and let that happen at that level. If you need to be on top of it, we should still be measuring and looking at what the numbers are telling us. Maybe then we would look at a way, at one time that I really feel this is something best left to be.
Thank you, Bill.
Thank you, General. Are there any other amendments? Then now the floor is open for a motion as to how we should proceed, so we can entertain a motion and vote on that and we'll see where that comes out. So the floor is now open for a motion.
Ms. Morrow?
I'll put forth a motion to move forward with an emergency regulation that would provide off-ramps for our local jurisdictions regarding the mask mandate or face covering mandate. Is that sufficient or does it need to be more?
No, I think what we would do is if that, for example, if that motion were to carry, then the department would have to take into account the comments and suggestions that were raised here and then to come back to the board with, in this case, an emergency reg that would take into account many of the comments, you know, that were addressed here. So we have a motion on the floor to proceed with an emergency reg with off-ramps. Ms. McCusker?
I'll second that emotion, emotion, I really said, I'll second that motion, I'm sorry.
I've been watching too much.
Dating myself and getting you.
Sorry, yes, you are.
Sorry about that.
Bowtown, bowtown, okay, all right. Excellent, so it has been, we have a motion to proceed with an emergency regulation with Now open for discussion of this particular motion. Seeing no, sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I didn't see, Senator Bates and then Mr. Bartley.
I just want to make sure I understand because, you know, I voted against the mask mandate before because there weren't options for the locals. So what we would be allowing is the off-ramps would be dependent on the local numbers and how they saw it, is that correct?
Yes.
So they would have the option, they would have the ability to opt out if it was such in their jurisdiction. I mean, we're not talking school by school, we're talking jurisdiction, correct?
I think you could probably do both, you could look at both, but I think what we are voting on today would be an instruction to MSDE to create regs, so the two-step process. First would be to tell them to create an emergency reg, and then once that emergency reg has been, assuming that passes, once that emergency reg has been developed, then there's a second vote on the reg itself.
So, but the process for determining the off-ramps, we're telling them to create a motion or a regulation that includes off-ramps.
Yes.
And my question really was, if we have the off-ramps, does that then allow the locals, if they need those conditions, to opt out of the statewide mandate? That's my question.
Yes, that would be the intent.
That's the whole point of the off-ramps, correct?
That's right.
Okay, I just want to make sure, you know, because that was my issue to begin with, that we didn't have those off-ramps if it was such that the locals didn't feel that it was necessary to. I'm okay with that, thank you.
Mr. Bartley and then Dr. Green.
If possible, I'd like to have the motion repeated so I can better understand it. So if you could just repeat what the motion is and so that we're all clear on it in this language.
Ms. Morrow?
Oh, I wish I had written down the first time. A motion to move forward with creating an emergency regulation that includes off-ramps for face coverings.
Dr. Simpson, if you wouldn't mind sort of reporting this so that we make sure we have the exact language, if you could do that.
So understanding the motion and how it has been proffered, again, I stated publicly that I'm against a permanent regulation. If this regulation had a sunset period, it may be something that I would consider, but again, I think the emergency regulation process that was in place and that has worked effectively for the current mask mandate should not be thwarted with this new regulation.
The, Mr. Bartley, if we go forward and I'll get Mr. Shona correctly, if this motion were to pass, it would be another emergency regulation with a maximum life of 180 days.
So it's not, if this is not a vote for a permanent motion, this is another emergency motion to take the place, I mean, another emergency regulation to take the place of the regulation that's in place and set to expire in February, correct?
That, Ms. Morrow, that it was an emergency regulation, and the difference between this regulation, and I'm, correct me if I'm wrong, the difference between what we currently have and what's being proposed is, the current regulation does not have any off-ramp, everybody's in, and it affects everyone across the state irrespective of vaccination rates or transmission rates or anything about nature.
Would this motion, I mean, would this regulation replace the current one or would it go into effect upon the expiration of the current one?
I think we would have to decide exactly when we would do it. I would, because the current reg can be rescinded at any time, is that correct, Mr. Shone?
That is correct, but it has 180-day total life and it will expire or become null at, if I remember correctly, February 25th. And so the idea, because you are, you might be considering a new regulation, would be something to replace the regulation which will no longer be in existence.
And so is this motion to, would go into immediate effect upon the expiration, I mean, this regulation would go into effect upon the immediate expiration of the current regulation? And if it was to do so, would it be going to effect regardless of the transmission rates and vaccination rates?
I can only address the first part because if the board does ultimately agree to move forward with a regulation, would have to go through the same AELR process before, as before, and then following the rules, it would go into effect at a date that would be determined, but it would go through the AELR process.
I would propose an amendment to this motion for the new emergency regulation, and that amendment would be, in the event transmission rates are the same and have not spiked or increased, and the mortality rate and the sickness rate of the student population has not increased, that the current regulation expire and that this new emergency regulation not take effect.
That, what we can do is, what we would have to do is, we'll have to take a vote on the amendment and dispose of the amendment one way or the other, we accept the amendment or we reject the amendment before we can vote on the basic question of an emergency reg, according to the broadest purpose. So we have a motion on the floor for a, an amendment. Mr. Bartley, would you again restate your amendment?
Yeah, in the event transmission rates and positivity rates amongst the student population have not increased but have in fact decreased, that the current emergency regulation in place shall expire and this new emergency regulation shall not take effect in its place.
Do we have a second on that motion? Again, a second doesn't mean that you support it, but it allows us to move to a vote. So we have Dr. Green, I believe he will first to assecond it.
Question?
Yes.
I have a question. Is that not the case?
This, let me make sure if I'm asked this correctly. What Ms. Morrow proposed is an emergency reg that would have off-ramps. That has to be set aside now, and the question before the board at this point is to vote on Mr. Bartley's amendment. So his amendment is what we have on the table right now, we have to vote on that. Once that's disposed of, either we accept it or reject it, then we can go back to the emergency regulation that Ms. Morrow proposed. So what's on the floor right now is we have to dispose of the amendment that Mr. Bartley proposed. We have Dr. Millie McCarthy and then Dr. Getty.
Can you repeat that amendment, Mr. Bartley?
I wish my memory was as good as it was prior to April 6, 2020, but unfortunately it's not. But is Mia or Miss Necessary, were you all taking notes regards to my amendment?
Yes, I am, but I'm also having similar difficulties keeping up with that.
Okay, so I'll just restate it.
We do have it, it is recorded by live stream and I can ship you what I have recorded and you can let me know if that is accurate.
Please.
Do you just want to hear Mr. Bartley's?
My amendment, yes.
In the event that transmission and positivity rates have not increased but in effect are decreasing, then the new regulation will take effect and the former regulation will be terminated.
No, that's, that's not it. It's, it's actually, in the event, the positivity rate and the infection rate, I think that, I don't know if my screen went out or not.
No, we have, yeah, we have.
It's, in the event, the positivity rate and the transmission rate amongst the student population has not increased and/or has decreased, the current emergency regulation shall expire and the news, and the new proposed emergency regulation shall not take effect.
Can I turn it into this? I want to go to Ms., Dr. Getty first and then come to you, Superintendent. Dr. Getty?
One of the issues, Sean, I see is when you said the transmission rate and the positivity rate, you added the phrase of the students. Is that data even available? Yeah, I'm thinking that data is not available separated out by the students as opposed to the community at large. And the second issue is, are you proposing it as county to county, that the new regulation will go into effect, or are you talking about statewide and then you're not recognizing the differences among the county? And we're gonna have all kinds of variations of people who have counties, counties who are not doing a second regulation, or people that are, I think it would get quite complicated by definitions.
We'll be able to dispose of this when we vote, we'll be able to vote, we'll solve that question or at least remove that question. Superintendent?
I was gonna say, there's a lot of assumptions in that motion. You know, we are assuming that our school systems are running the same testing regimen to measure positivity rates every single day. That is not happening. We, they are choosing different testing regimens, some are not even testing, and the cases that you see us reporting to you is when they have a confirmed case, when someone is actually, you know, sick or confirmed being sick, but not, it's not like a, you know, assembly line of people coming in where other school systems are doing screening testing or, you know, or doing random testing, that's not happening at scale in the same way. So those case numbers are reported in 24 different ways when it comes to how, those case numbers are confirmed cases, but they're not like of the entire population, right? Like they are, they are, whatever happens at that moment is what they're counting. Some are doing more aggressive screening testing, such as I believe Mr. Bartley in the county you live in, others are not doing that. So if we are creating a motion that wants to take into account differentiated metrics or baselines based on county, then you are also putting a burden or we are assuming an operation that measures that in that way, and that's just not true right now.
What I'd like to do is hear from Mr. Bartley and let's take a vote on this and then that will tell us how we go on that amendment. Mr. Bartley?
My amendment is based upon the data that you and your team supplied today, and are you telling me that I can't rely upon that data to make this amendment to the motion?
So the CDC measure is, is that what you're saying? You just want to base, you just want to base it on the CDC? We just gave you CDC and MDH, so if you're, if that's what you're saying, just using that measure, then yeah, if that, then I would, I would want the motion, I would respectfully ask that you make a motion that's very clear about what your data source is, because you can't, if it's broad.
I'm relying on the data you just gave me.
Let's, let's assume, let me, let me, I would like to, let's assume then that we're using the data that the superintendent has. So we, now, what I'd like to do now is to ask Dr. Simpson to take a vote, and this vote is only on Mr. Bartley's amendment, that's it, whether we accept that or not.
Mr. Bartley?
Yes.
Ms. Bates?
Yes.
Ms. Chang? Mr. DeShiel?
No.
Dr. Getty?
No.
Dr. Grady? Ms. Hallie?
No.
Ms. McCusker? Dr. Millie McCarthy?
No.
Ms. Morrow? General Sumpert? Dr. Wilcox?
No.
Mr. Bucun?
No.
President Crawford?
No.
The vote is complete.
Mr. Shaw?
The motion failed, the vote was ten against and four in favor.
Okay, so now back on the table is the original motion from Ms. Moore. Uh, Dr. Simpson, would, did you write that down?
The motion from Ms. Moore?
Yes. It was an emergency.
That I prepared and Ms. Moore, you can tell me if this is accurate. Uh, her motion was to move forward with an emerg-, or to uh of, to have the department move forward with an emergency regulation that will provide for off-ramps for local jurisdictions.
So that is the motion that is on the table. Do we have a second? Again, seconded by Ms. Hallie, did I get that?
Ms. Ms. McCusker had seconded it originally.
Okay, Ms. McCusker, okay. So we have it, so it has been, the motion has been made and has been properly seconded. So again, discussion, Ms. McCusker, did you have um discussion related to this motion?
Only that it, it really charges MSD even coming to us with some reasonable off-ramps that we can discuss and debate um once brought to us. Um, this motion is basically asking for an emergency reg that will come into place that gives some local control in off-ramps. And then when it's brought to us, we will be able to debate what those off, what's brought to us as off-ramps, what we think should be added or deleted from that or changed from that and allow us to move forward with something like that. This isn't a vote on the actual regulation, it is a vote to bring something forward for us to consider in detail.
That's correct. And it's just like with any other regulation that comes forward. The board has an opportunity to review it, to make comment, to decide whether to accept the proposed regulation, modify it or reject it. So this is not a decision on the regulation. What this is, is a decision to bring something forward for consideration. Dr. Green?
So my question again is, will this new regulation um completely end the prior regulation? Or will it be set to begin at the end of the current regulation in February?
I would suggest that what we do is that we leave that with MSD. We have an opportunity, once we see the new reg, to decide then whether we would want it to begin immediately, you know, as soon as possible. Or we could have it begin at the conclusion of the current reg. So that's, that's, that's something that we will always have the option to do. And I think whatever guidance that we wanna give to MSD as they're crafting it, that's, that's, that's very helpful. But we as the board will make the final decision on whatever um eventually, let's assume, gets approved as an emergency reg. And then because it's an emergency reg or a reg of this nature, we can be certain that we're gonna have another AELR hearing, because meaning from my understanding, any member of the committee can request a hearing. So we'll have another hearing, whether that happens before they go into that blackout period or after they come out later, just don't know, we don't control their calendar. But you would have an opportunity to look at that and to comment on that in the final reg, just like you would have an opportunity to look at uh the suggestions that MSD may have in terms of off-ramp. They want different ones, whether, you'll have that opportunity. You're not voting on that now, you're just voting on having them take into account the things that were said today to come back to us with something that we can review and make a decision on, modify, reject, whatever. So it's a two-step process. But we would need to give them explicit instructions to do this so that they could actually start work on it and bring it back. We definitely make sure that everybody gets a chance to comment on the, if we're, if this motion passes, everyone gets a chance to comment on that and take all of that into account, absolutely. Ms. Hallie?
I mean, if we uh end the discussion period and move to a vote, if that's a proper request.
Can do that and uh just see what we come up. Thank you. So um, Dr. Simpson, would you once more uh take the role for us?
Mr. Bartley?
No.
Ms. Bates?
Yes.
Ms. Chang?
Yes.
Mr. DeShiel?
Yes.
Dr. Getty?
Yes.
Dr. Green?
Yes.
Ms. Hallie?
Yes.
Ms. McCusker?
Yes.
Dr. Millie McCarthy?
Yes.
Ms. Moore?
Yes.
General Suntar?
No.
Dr. Wilcox?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Buchholz? President Crawford?
Yes.
Vote is complete.
Mr. Shaw?
The motion carried, uh, twelve in favor and two opposed.
So what we will do is we charge MSD to pull this together, to take into account the comments that were raised, so in addition to the uh vaccination rate, to consider other potential off-ramps, to take into account the idea of when the, the start date for the new reg would be and come back to the board uh with a proposed uh regulation that we would consider just as we consider all other uh proposed regulations. Ms. McCusker?
I also ask for MSD to consider exception to the performance.
Sure, absolutely, absolutely. All righty. You guys are.
Action to adjourn.
Yeah, you guys are, you guys are great. We can work through very difficult situations and uh we do it in a most respectful way. Dr. Green?
No, I was seconding.
Oh.
Hallie's motion.
Okay. All righty.
Her motion also.
So I, I assume there's no discussion of the, of, of adjourning at this time? So we'll go right to a vote, we'll do a voice and hand vote. Uh, is that okay, Mr. Shaw? It is perfectly acceptable. Okay, all in favor of adjourning, please raise your hand and say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Oh, you did, you did, that's wonderful. And, and I stand, okay, great. Thank you much, you guys do a very, very great job handling some really tough.